I'd like to call the January 2014 County Commission Meeting to order. The first item we have on our agenda is the invocation by Commissioner Tommy Little and the pledge by Commissioner Mary Brockman. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful this day that you have given us with its blessings and its opportunities and its challenges. We appreciate the use of each day that come to us. We pray for your strength and your guidance for each day as it comes, for the duties and each day's problems that we may solve them, and for the challenges that they present. And at this time, we also want to ask a special blessing for the Morrow family in this time of their loss, for he served this county for many years. As we gather here today as members of this commission, we are ever mindful of the opportunities that are in there that we have to render service to our fellow citizens. We ask that you give us the strength and the guidance that we can improve the value of life here and exert our efforts in those things which will make a difference for future generations to make this a better county, a better state, and better nation. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is roll call. If you push your present button and confirm. All right. Next, we have approval of minutes of the November 12, 2013 Commission Meeting. They were mailed to each member. I'll entertain a motion.
Over.
Mr. Wilson.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Any changes? I see none. If you're in favor of them as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they're accepted. Introduction and acceptance of Highway Commission minutes, and these were mailed to each county commissioner. All in.
Hancock and Dwight Jones.
Mr. Hancock and Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. All in favor of those as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they're accepted. Next, we have citizens' communication. We have one. If you'll come forward when I call your name, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Gary Graham.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My name is Gary Graham, and I have lived at 2213 Oakwood Drive East here in Franklin for over 20 years. I am also the president of the Oakwood Homeowners Association, and I am here tonight to share concerns of myself and our members regarding a devastating fire in our neighborhood on November 6 last year. Many of you may have seen the coverage on Channel 5 News from the time that the fire was called in about 7:00 PM until the first fire truck arrived was over 20 minutes and the home was totally engulfed in flames. Please understand that our neighborhood is supported by a wonderful group of volunteer firemen, and there's no way being critical to the response given to this fire. It is only very concerning that the response time and how our volunteer presented delayed response time all over our tiers are great, and we sincerely appreciate them for the job they do and provide each family in our area with what can be done to ensure their safety and improved response in the county. Our main concern is with the extreme growth in Williamson County that the safety and protection of our residents need to be reevaluated. This concern, not only for our residents but also for the safety of those volunteer firemen who put their lives on the line. Fortunately, our neighbors were not home. When this fire broke out because it could have been so much worse, the home was a total loss and how thankful we are that they were not injured as it spread so quickly in 20 minutes. Is it possible that there could have been better support system in place before we might see a deadly fire? We live in one of the most wealthy counties in the current country, and we currently are supported by such excellent emergency systems by the Williamson County Sheriff's Department and the ambulance response services. We are most grateful. What about fire protection being funded and supported better for those volunteers, for the way staffing our fire departments so they could be kept full or part-time volunteers on staff? Seeing our nearest home and contents totally lost was so devastating. This was brought to our attention that concerns raised by our neighbors and myself, we started asking what we can do to help. Our concerns are being raised tonight are not for ourselves but for our volunteer firemen and their safety. Could there be a better plan in place for faster response time and protection of our area residents? Thank you for your time and consideration to our concerns and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. That's all of the citizens' communication. Next on our agenda, I've got some communications and Resolution 114-5, Resolution 114-6, Resolution And that's all I have been pulled by the sponsors, and we will see those again. Next, moving on, we've got, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Brockman, you wanted to say something to that.
Indeed, we're disappointed that we're not going to be able to hear the resolutions tonight that refer to the rezoning effort out in the Old Hillsborough Road area of District 9. The errors were made and inadvertent mistakes, so the notifications were not sent appropriately. And I just wanted to say this is something that we are disappointed, that indeed these cannot be heard until March, because not only was there one error made, but then there was an error made to try to get it to the February meeting to be heard. So this is relates to voluntary petitions by residents out in our area. We believe that rural preservation is absolutely importantly represented by RP 5 and its description within our comprehensive plans. So we look forward to having these before you in March. We've been working hard for the last six, seven months on this. We thought we would have everything here ready tonight, but things happened and don't want to point a finger of blame. Everybody's apologetic, but you will be hearing these before you soon.
Another message I want to remind each commissioner, we've got an ethics form that's due yearly, and that is due, I believe, January 30th or 31st is the last day. So I want to remind you about that and the campaign financial disclosure forms I think are also due. So just a reminder on that. Next, we'll hear reports from county offices. We'll hear from County Mayor Roger Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask Nina to make her way up here and give us a snapshot of the last couple of months.
Good evening. We've got several reports to go over as we didn't meet in December. The first one you have is your monthly budget reports. We have those for October and November, and there's nothing out of the ordinary to report in those months. We're tracking well for this time of the year. Also in your packet, you have the CT 0253 forms. We're required to send those to the State Comptroller's Office each time we issue bonds and also to report that back to the commission. So you have both of those in here in your packet. Also this month, you have the Cool Springs Conference Center. The report for October, the county received $38,097.86. For the month of November, the county paid back out $13,864.78. Also, you have your yearly synopsis of what we have to date from the Cool Springs Conference Also this month, you have your privilege tax reports. You have those for October and November. In October, we had a spike in collections. There was an apartment complex that came online in the Cool Springs area. Also this month, there was a question in one of our committee meetings about how much money had been collected for our adequate school privilege tax. I guess the pertinent figures that you would really be looking at would be on the last page. You'll see what has been shared to date with the cities. There's a total of $7,904,480 that have gone collectively to the cities. There's been $1.8 million go-to Franklin Special School District. There was a total collections of $26 million. Out of the $26 million after we shared those distributions with the cities and Franklin Special School District, that was a total of $16.6 million that has come back to the county so far. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Danner?
Yes. Nina, thank you for your answers today on the Cool Springs Convention Center. I was curious, can you tell me why we're on a different payment schedule than Franklin? I thought we kind of went into that endeavor together, and they apparently have made all the payments and are done, and we still have payments through 2017.
I know that ours was part of a larger issue. There were several items rolled in together, but the mayor had more detail than I would.
Thank you, Nina. Commissioner, when Franklin and Williamson County went together to do the Cool Springs funding, they chose the mechanisms to take it through the hotel motel tax. We chose it to borrow the money and do like any other expenditures that we did. We carried it out for 20 years, and I think you saw on the payment schedule, we'll be through in 2017. Does that sound right? And that's the difference.
Okay, okay. All right.
Any other questions? I've seen none.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we don't always get other mayors and aldermen that come in from other areas, and if I could, I'd like to introduce the mayor of Nolansville, Jimmy Alexander, and the alderman who used to be the mayor over in the Nolansville community, one of the fastest-growing communities we have that are sitting on the, well, the second row, but here in the front. They're here to answer some of the questions that may come up a little bit later. Welcome to both of you for being here.
Welcome. Next, we'll hear from Director of Schools, Dr. Mike Looney.
Good evening, everyone. The school system is operating well. We had an incident on Friday. It's been rough with snow and sleet, but we're back in, and all operations are going well. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. We only have one resolution for you tonight, and appreciate your consideration of it.
Commissioner Danner?
Just a couple of quick questions, and I think you kind of answered them already in committee, but I just kind of wanted to get them out on the record. Because I know a lot of people are asking me and you and everybody. You know where I'm going to ask you. But the first one is, all right, well, first of all, when are you going to ask the county for the construction funds for the Nolansville K through 8? Is that what you're building first? Are you going to ask for them both simultaneously?
We plan on asking for them simultaneously and not exactly sure of the month, but somewhere around May.
Okay, that's good. And then the zoning for that school, you're going to do prior to May, correct? We'll have the zoning before the request for funding?
Yes, ma'am. I will be taking the recommendation to the board, I believe, in April.
Okay. Is it going to be a countywide or is it just going to be a part of the county?
No, ma'am, and it's not going to be a countywide rezoning if I can help it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Any other reports for any county offices?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
I was wondering if Ms. Montgomery from the Health Department might tell us about the latest on the flu epidemic. I think that I heard that the state has said that all flu shots at the health departments are free, and I was wondering how we're stacking up and if we have plenty of vaccines.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you for that question. Actually, in the Franklin clinic, we had approximately 141 doses. In our Fairview clinic, we had 80 available for free. The media has picked up on this. They've sent the message out. On Friday, we started doing free flu vaccines. We've got them available in Franklin from 8 until 10, and 1 until 3 is how we've got it scheduled, but we're not turning anyone away who wants to come in for a free flu vaccine. We gave 46 flu shots in our Franklin clinic on Friday, 44 today. So we're nearly almost out of our flu vaccine that we had available to us. I know in Fairview on Friday, they did 16 flu vaccines. I'm not sure about today. So the word's getting out. Our health department has been booming with business, so it's been great. It's been great. Thank you.
Any other reports? I see none. Moving on to elections and appointments. First, we have Stormwater Appeals Board, three-year term expiring in January 2017. Residential Commercial Development Representative, Dan Crunk, term expiring. Nomination, Dan Crunk.
You can get the screen together.
Yeah. The homeowner association rep is Brad Hoot. Nomination, Brad Hoot. Environmental Representative, term expiring, Dory Bowles. Nomination, Dory Bowles. I'll entertain a motion for Commissioner Wilson, the second, Commissioner Little. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of those nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they are confirmed. Next, we have the Agricultural Committee, two-year terms expiring January 2016. Commissioner Position, Jack Walton, term expiring. Nomination, Jack Walton. Also expiring, Commissioner Tom Bain, and nomination, Commissioner Judy Herbert. The Farmer Position, Jesse Dotson Jr., and the nomination is Jesse Dotson Jr. And Farm Woman Position is Donna Stanley, and the nomination is Donna Stanley. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Mr. Green, Commissioner Smith the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain, and I assume Judy Herbert will abstain too. So they are confirmed. Next, moving on to the Consent Agenda, we have the Notaries and two resolutions on the consent. If anyone wants to pull those, please say so now. If not, we'll hear it as a whole. So we're good. So I need a motion to accept.
No for approval.
Mr. Cook and Commissioner Little the second. It's loaded on the machine. All in favor of the Consent Agenda, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, including Lou? Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
We still got Mr. Green out.
He's voted yes verbally.
Okay. Say 23.
At the time, Bain would work him absent, but allowed the voice vote.
24 present. 24 ayes.
Okay. Consent Agenda passes 24 ayes. Moving right along.
Zero no.
All right. We're now moving to Resolution 114-1, requested by the Board of Education. Resolution for inner category adjustment for principal salaries. Commissioner Barnwell?
Second.
Who was the second? Commissioner Smith?
Hawkins and Smith.
All right. School Board, I don't have that up. Pat, I assume that was 12-0?
11.
11-0. Education Committee. Budget Committee. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a need to renew budget process. Advanced degrees for principals was inadvertently left out of the budget. This is to correct that problem. I commend the school system. They're using budgetary category transfer versus asking to use fund balance, so they're within their own, using their budget to help their budget.
Commissioner Little? Did you have a question? Commissioner Danner?
Just a quick clarification, Dr. Looney. I had a question. You moved it from the teacher budget line item to the principal. There are no teachers that are suffering financially from this move, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 114-1, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Can we do that?
Let him vote. 24 ayes, 0 no.
Okay. All right.
You might as well leave him absent the rest of the night.
Lou, if you'll state your vote.
I vote yes.
Yes.
You're going to keep it interesting tonight.
Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
I got 24 ayes, 0 no.
24 ayes. And that resolution passes.
We counting you, Lou.
Resolution 114-2, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Williamson County Health Department budget by $2,500. Revenue is to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Hancock? Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Public Health Committee?
Six in favor, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a grant that the Health Department tried to get in, was successful, and it started a nutrition program and funding for kind of a nutrition and gardening experiment for the Franklin Special 9th District. And we were told at the Public Health Committee that it was a tremendous success and look forward to maybe having something like it. No local money. Appreciate your support.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-2, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
I vote yes.
Tommy's not voting yet.
He's trying.
Tommy, you know.
Something's wrong in that district.
District 5's having trouble.
Anyone wishing to change their vote can do so at this time.
I have 24 present.
Record to vote, Ms. Anderson. 24. Resolution passes. Resolution 114-10, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Animal Control Budget by $200. Revenue is to come from donations.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Cook the second. Public Health Committee?
Six in favor, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
This was a donation by a family who wanted to be used to purchase medical supplies, and we would like to do that.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. I hate to say this. Everybody ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 114-10, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
It's contagious.
You're next.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
24 ayes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 114-11, Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Animal Control Budget by $11,200. Revenue is to come from Williamson Animal Services Incorporated for the purchase of a commercial washer and dryer to be installed at the Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Herbert the second. Public Health Committee?
Six in favor, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
At this point, there are three household-type washers and dryers that stay in constant use there when they're not in need of repair. That is time-consuming, has a large water usage, and is just not effective. The need is to have a big commercial cleaner and washer and dryer, and since this does have to be bid, because it did, it was over $10,000, the bidding has been done. It's come in at the $11,200, and we, WAS, is an organization that was formed as a result of our task force that makes it possible to support animal control by receiving donations, no tax dollars used. Donations are gotten through fundraisers and generous people who make those donations.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-12, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
I vote yes. Louis Green.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
24 ayes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 114-12, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Health in appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Animal Control budget by $3,100.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes? Need a second? Commissioner Little?
No.
Oh.
Mister Hester.
All right. Public Health Committee?
Six in favor, zero against.
All right. Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
You've all seen the animal-friendly license plates. A certain portion goes to the, by way of grants, to the different communities that do demand spay and neutering at their adoption. This is our portion, and it's requested by a grant. And we are hoping to receive money that will be used for that purpose.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-12? Push your yes button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Doodly noted.
When I push the button, the light does not come on.
You want to vote verbally, Tom?
I have twenty-four yes.
Is warranty time run out on this system? Resolution 114-15. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Office of Public Safety budget by $9,600. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a state grant given to us for preparing for emergencies or any domestic or attacks of any type.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-15? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety 2013-2014 budget by $125,521. Revenues to come from Homeland Security Grant Funds. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight? Jones, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a grant to provide for training and exercises and equipment from Homeland Security. It's a grant that's given to us.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-16? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
All right. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time.
I have twenty-four yes, zero no.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Resolution 114-19. Resolution amending the 2013-14 General Sessions DUI Court budget by $86,725. Revenues to come from federal grant funds. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Mr. Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a grant to try to lower the number of repeat DUI offenders. And I think this is a very good program.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-19? Push your yes button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 114-21. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Parks and Rec Department budget by $15,000. Revenues to come from Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Commissioner Davis?
Second.
Mr. Green, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
Thank you. This is money that's coming from the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau to support, to the county, to support the Tennessee Senior Olympics. We currently have a five-year deal to host the Olympics here. And that takes care of our portion of the contribution.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Let me just say, as Chairman of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, how much we appreciate the work the County Parks and Rec Department puts in to provide this. This goes back a number of years. The relationship with the CVB and Parks and Rec. And we've provided an excellent event for these folks. They love coming to Franklin. A lot of that has to do with Doug and his group and the work that they do. This portion, this $15,000 portion is, goes to the Senior Olympics by way of an agreement, a contract that we have with them. There's an additional roughly $8,000 that is also expended through the CVB and the Parks and Rec Department to put on the services that Senior Olympics receives here. So I appreciate y'all's support.
Okay. Any other discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-21? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 114-22. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Health Department budget by $13,300 for local health services. Revenues to come from grant funds received through State of Tennessee. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This is the money coming through the State of Tennessee, which we get every year to support the Health Department.
Any discussion? I see none. All in favor of Resolution 114-22? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Okay, I have twenty-four yes, zero no.
Wait a minute, Commissioner Hester. All right, now record the vote.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
All right. Resolution passes. Resolution 114-23. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Election Commission budget by $39,173.40. Revenues to come from other local revenues. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is for the Franklin City election that the city of Franklin has been invoiced and it submitted payment for the cost of the election.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 114-23? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 114-24. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 Circuit Court Clerk budget by $7,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is using the fees that they collect to purchase new computer equipment for the clerk's office.
Any discussion? Commissioner Langston?
No.
Have nothing.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 114-24? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes, zero no.
All right. Resolution passes. Resolution 114-26. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an addendum to the inter-local agreement with the town of Nolansville concerning additional financial obligations of the parties for renovations to the Nolansville Rec Center and appropriating $325,000. Funds to come from the Recreation Privilege Tax Funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Four four one against.
Tax Study Committee?
I was absent, I think, does that, would it be, go to the vice chair? Or do you want me to just read it?
Just read it.
Three four zero against.
All right. Property Committee?
Five four zero.
All right. And Budget Committee?
Five four zero against.
Commissioner Green, Commissioner Little, y'all want to speak to this?
Yes. The town of Nolansville and the county entered into an inter-local agreement to make adjustments to the rec center in Nolansville. And since that time, there were some changes made in the work that was needed to be done. And that included changes in plans to account for flood prevention. As a result of that, the bid came back at $5,650,000, an increase of $650,000. So we have to enter to another inter-local agreement between the county and the town of Nolansville, where the county's going to pay the three hundred and half of that, $325,000. The town of Nolansville will pay in two payments, $162,500. One when they sign the agreement, the addendum, and then one in September.
Okay. You want anything, Tom?
Well, just that this, this has been on the drawing board. They are matching 50% of the cost. And this is a good use of the facilities. We would appreciate your support.
Commissioner Ryan, question?
Yes, sir. In terms of the changes that were made, what necessitated it? Is it in a flood plain? What type of changes were made? Is it a change in agricultural design, Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, that was, we put more emphasis on some flood issues out there. As you know, we had two water issues in the last three or four years. So it's a, some flood apparatus that go around the back doors. And basically, that staff can install when something like this is coming. We're also rerouting some water approved by Nolansville, by the way. And also, we've added more concrete and paving because we thought two inches wasn't enough in some of the areas. And that was increased to four inches, and that's the reason for the cost. And also, it came about because of the bids.
Okay, very good. Is there any delays?
No. Yes, sir, of course there are delays. No, I mean, it's not.
Significant delays?
Yeah. No. No, it's not. It's back on track now, and everybody signs off, and we're ready to go. Matter of fact, we're having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would, Mr. Alexander, one of y'all like to say something? At this time?
Thank you. I'm Jimmy Alexander, from town of Nolansville. And you don't know how great the people of Nolansville appreciate what we're doing here now with a new rec center. We wanted this for a long time. We need it. And we also appreciate, appreciate the county working with us. And we're happy to do our part, as always. Again, thank you very much.
All right. If I may, I believe Nolansville passed that, their half the other night.
They did, yes.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, you got a follow-up?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 114-26? Push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, I have twenty-four yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Okay. Yeah. Right now, that's the end of appropriation, so we're getting to the other on the agenda. Resolution 114-25? If nobody objects, I'd like to move that up. That's also pertaining to the town of Nolansville. And while they're here, we can get them finished, and they can be on their way. So if there's no objections, the next resolution we'll hear is 114-25. So we good? So we'll hear that. So Resolution 114-25. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute an addendum to the inter-local agreement with the town of Nolansville concerning use of funds received by the town of Nolansville from the adequate school facilities tax. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Little, the second. Tax Study Committee? Budget Committee?
Four four one against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is, the city of Nolansville wants, has received grant funds for the building of trails to connect public facilities, the schools, the rec center, and several other areas around there. And they would like to use part of the adequate school facilities tax monies as the matching part for these grants. This is very similar to what we did for Fairview a couple of months ago. And Alderman Beth Luthers is here, and she has been very instrumental in this. And if she would like to say a few things or explain this, I would appreciate her help.
Thank you, Commissioner Little. Thank you so much for your attention. I appreciate it. The Small Town Connection project is an attempt for us to connect Nolan's Elementary School all the way through County Park and property, the rec center, and then connect to a road improvement project on Sunset Road with our road impact fees that will widen with pedestrian lanes and bicycle paths to connect all the way to Sunset Elementary School and Sunset Middle School. We have been fortunate to get $620,000 grant already. The town of Nolansville is providing the $126,000 match. We're now up for a $517,000 grant to complete the project in its entirety. And one of the three grants that we're applying for, we are finalists, where it's a 95, 5% match, which is just very exciting. Also in this is up to $50,000 from the fund to create a connection behind Sunset Elementary School and Sunset Middle School to the development and rural areas to the after-that school, which is currently divided by a huge culvert. And students have to, you know, travel on buses and cars all the way around our rural community, suburban community, to get to Sunset Schools. The exciting thing, and I'll conclude with this, is this entire project will connect to the new high school. Where the town of Nolansville has required a 10-foot multimodal path that will connect from Nolan'sville School all the way to the, to the new high school. So this is truly an opportunity to connect all of our schools in an area that has primarily been rural, now suburban, with narrow shoulders, slim areas for kids to bike and walk that are not safe. And we're trying to create that safe connectivity from our, for our schoolchildren. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Danner?
I just wanted to state for the record that at the Budget Committee, I had voiced concern about where this money was coming from. And, but since then, Beth has changed my mind, which I haven't, I don't think I've changed my mind in a vote, ever. And so, you're the first. I was missing information, I think, with your maps and explanation of how it will tie in with the new campus. I also liked hearing you had about $200,000 in your Um, I also liked hearing you had about $200,000 in your adequate facilities tax fund, and I would hope when that new campus comes in, that you will save every penny in that fund and apply it to any of the needs that might come up, but that I, I like this project and where it's going, and I've changed my thinking.
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 11425, push your yes button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Mr. Bain?
It's not working. You, you vote yes? Hope so.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. We've got 24 yes.
24 yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1143. Resolution declaring certain Williamson County-owned property surplus, property and authorizing the sale of property at auction or by other permissible means. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, let's see. Highway Commission? Five, four, zero, against. Property Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Uh, Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, the county bought, uh, a parcel on 4395 Harpeth School Road back in September, and this, uh, resolution gives the county the authorization to move forward and, uh, sell the residential structure that's not needed and other related structures on real property. We don't, we don't need them.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1143, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
I have 24 yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11413. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a lease agreement with Drew Luna for the use and maintenance of real property. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hester, the second. Uh, Property Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is the property that we bought at the end of Macklemore Goose Creek Bypass, um, for our future fire hole.
All right. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Hester?
Thank you. Chairman, uh, I would like to say I appreciate Mr. Graham being this, here this evening, and the fire that was in Oakwood Estates was very devastating, and my sympathy goes to that family for losing their home. Uh, we, I believe we have good fire protection, but of course, we want excellent fire protection. I've spoken extensively with Mr. Bill Jorgensen on this matter, and I appreciate the attention that he has helped us with, but this piece of property, which we intend to use for a fire station in the, in the future, will help us get to more excellent fire protection, and I would ask for your support on this, please.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 11413, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Okay. Mr. Bain votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. 24 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11414. Resolution authorizing Williamson County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Williamson County, Tennessee, the city of Brentwood, the city of Franklin, and the Williamson County Emergency Communications District. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Six, four, zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Uh, Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is to allow the municipalities and the Williamson County to coordinate, uh, with radio in case of emergencies, and, uh, Bill was here if you have any questions or any concerns about this, but this is to go tell the county into better handle emergencies.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 11414, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11417. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Children's Services concerning state supplemental juvenile court improvement funds. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little, the second. Uh, Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a, a state grant to improve, uh, juvenile court, uh, service, funds and services.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 11417, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
I have 24 yes, zero no.
And I forgot to recognize Judge Guffey in the audience. Welcome, Judge. Did, did you want to say anything? I've... Uh, that resolution passes. Resolution 11418. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a contract with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is, uh, uh, an agreement where the Sheriff's Office will go with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force, and it also will pay for any of our officers overtime and their services, uh, and the Sheriff's here if you have any questions about this program.
All right. Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 11418, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 11420. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the United States Marshal Service for Violent Offender Task Force. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Mr. Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
All right. Uh, Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This memorandum, memorandum of, uh, understanding will allow the Sheriff's Office to continue to assist the United States Marshal Service in investigations and arrest of the bad guys, and will also help him to get more money back in seizures. There's a method for doing that in this memorandum. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of 11420, push your yes button and confirm. Oppose your no button and confirm.
Commissioner Green votes yes.
Commissioner Little votes yes.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
I have 24 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the agenda for tonight.
One hour. One hour.
If Diane wanted to remind you, if you'll push your button, turn your mic off, and, uh, right after I get a motion to adjourn. Now, did you want to speak?
I wanted to thank all the individuals who, we received grant funds and hundreds of thousands of dollars this month, and, uh, want to thank all the individuals who worked so hard to get that for the county and help our budget, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Well, I did not see that.